Welcome to the regular meeting of council Tuesday, June 21st at 4:40 PM. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located in the traditional territories of the Cree, Algonquin peoples and other indigenous peoples whose presence continue to enrich our vibrant community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings around the earth and culture. We honor these teachings through our interactions today and every day here. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives through action language. Thank you. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Council Ivenoff, seconded by Council Owen, being resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on June 21st, 2022, be approved as amended to include item 6.8, March 16th, 2022, tax sales and collection update.
All in favor? Motion carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. Councilor Adams.
Item 6.5 and 8.6, employee of a nickel eagle.
Okay. Councilor Shaba?
Item number 6.3, swastika forest main project update.
Okay. For the, your worship. The reason why?
The reason why?
Oh, the reason why? Okay, my, uh, I'm sending direct to conflict. Uh, my firm is a mayor's subcontractor to the main contractor of this project. So I invite the client company of interest in any board members to move to this.
Given the noted acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Council Shaba, seconded by Council White, being resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting held, uh, meeting of council held June 7th, 2021, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Moved by Council Adams, seconded by Council Ivanoff, being resolved that council received the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Museum Advisory Committee held February 16th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried? Reports of municipal officers and communications. Item 6.1 Radar Speed Signs, Jim Rowan, Director of Public Works.
Don't need to use the microphone. Don't need to use the microphone. Okay.
I think your worship through to council. Um, we were asked to prepare a report, um, on the radar speed signs that, uh, that we have, uh, what are up on the streets these days. Um, so this report is in response to that request and an opportunity as well to inform the public on, um, on purpose of achievements and their limitations. Um, these units were basically purchased for road classification purposes. Um, the Ministry of Transportation classifies roads based on the average annual deal traffic and the legal posted speed limit. Now, once roads classified, um, or once we determine what, uh, how roads classified, um, this leads us uh, to determine certain sign standards such as road width, road grade, um, as well as maintenance standards such as requirements and timing for snowing people and frequency inspections. And sometimes road classifications even factored into government funding. So as a result of the purchase, these, uh, these devices to help us nail down, uh, what classification the roads are in our network. Um, now in addition to being able to count traffic, uh, these units can determine, uh, display and record vehicle speed. And that's a feature that's useful as a traffic calming measure. Uh, you can see we right now, we had them set up on government road west between the law and chapus where the speed limit, uh, was recently lowered to 50 kilometers an hour. And it's, it's useful for, um, to, you know, to point out to drivers just, just how fast they're going. But it should be noted that, um, these units cannot take photographs or they can't identify, uh, vehicles in any way. So they're really just there as a traffic calming, um, device and, uh, we, we actually have the ability to turn off the display TV and just use it to count traffic. So we'll be, um, placing these devices around town throughout summer um, to help us classify the roadways in town.
There's any questions? Councilor White?
Sorry, I must have, I must be mistaken. I thought these, uh, were purchased for the purpose of traffic calming. Um, so I must have been mistaken on that. Um, but because they are, um, able to collect data on speeding, has that data been collected and analyzed? And if so, has it been provided to the OPP or Police Services Board for action within the community?
Well, we've just begun to collect the data now on these roadways. We did place, um, units on Main Street.
Yeah.
And it did identify that, um, there's a certain percentage of drivers that, that are exceeding the speed limit. So this information is available to provide to the Police Services Board. Uh, to date, we haven't been providing them this information, but, uh, certainly it is available. These units are also available to be placed strategically through, through a town in, in response to those types of concerns that, uh, Allen Avenue, it, it is certainly a concern. Uh, certainly starting in the, the school district and that type of thing. So these units will identify the average speed at a particular kind of date. But that kind of information, I'm sure would be of interest to the, to the, but to date, we haven't been providing them of that.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I like Council White remembered that we purchased these as calming, uh, traffic calming devices. Um, that's back when, uh, Ms. Billidoo was, uh, you know, uh, director and we had long discussions. I remember reporting to council about what I've seen in Oshmo in terms of, of traffic calming. And, you know, I don't normally speed and if I do, I'm just a few kilometers over. But I can assure you that I enjoy those signs because I'm constantly comparing my speedometer with exactly what the sign says. And yes, I have caught myself where I've slipped up over where I thought I was going. And so personally, I find them very good in terms of traffic calming. The only negative I have is that sometimes you can't read the sign saying, and we can't do anything about that. That's just where the sun is, how the sun is hitting it. But, uh, I love having them over there and hopefully, uh, as time goes on, we'll use them in the school zones because, uh, now that I have, uh, a couple of grandchildren that are in kindergarten, um, it's just sort of re- reminded me how unpredictable they can be. And, um, but frankly, when I was five years old, I ran up from behind a parked car and got hit. So hopefully we can rotate them into the school zones. But, uh, as a member of the Police Services Board, I definitely would like to see those stats um, in a report form, just like we get reports for council. Because the OPP, whenever the Police Services Board has asked the OPP to patrol a specific area because we think there is a speed, uh, uh, concern, um, they have different, they have official terms that I can't remember. They have always been very good at looking into it and reporting back. But their figures are always skewed because more often than not, people see the police car and they slow down, right? So this will give them real input if we have areas in town where there is speed. So thanks, Jim, and keep those signs out there because we need to, to ensure safety in the community as well. Uh, I consider it a secondary purpose, but in classification of the roads. Cause, um, at one time we had one of those, uh, you know, poles that went across the road, but over the years it disappeared and they are quite expensive, I've been told to replace. So. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Council Rowan. Any other comments, uh, Council Shaba?
Yeah, was there a plan to provide the data to the Police Service Board, uh, in the future? And, well, do you need any help from us here to make that happen or we just taking your time because it doesn't really install?
Well, to this point, we hadn't been directed to provide results to the Police Services Board, but certainly.
So you were granted racial from us at some point to do that, right? For the council?
Certainly, well, I take it that's.
Okay. Was it something that we could do today or another time?
Your worship, if it's the will of council to want to amend the rest, the recommendation, uh, I, I have Council White as the reverend, Council Owen as a secondor for an amendment that, uh, formal reports of the compiled data be forwarded quarterly to the Police Services Board.
Any further comments or questions?
Well, uh, I just, I just think we, yes, I believe we should provide that to the Police Services Board. I'd like to say for action, I just don't want them to have the information for the sake of getting the information, well, for further action. Uh, which may include that maybe public service announcement to let people know that if you're traveling in this street there and you want to slow, so just slow down. Uh, like you said, Mike Lissel, uh, if you have the cruisers sitting there, what did people do? Just think of maybe we'll slow down, so. But at least we can have the idea that the Police Services Board for further action. I don't want them to just get it that, that, that. Stop by the solar and be in the.
I just, yeah. I just want to clarify if the motion on the floor to amend the amendment is. Yes, I didn't move in a second. Okay, okay, sorry.
So. Yeah, it's three, just a follow-up question. Um, so is there plans, do you, does your department have a specific plan of where they're moving these units? Like to cover the entirety of Kirkland Lake or are you just specifically moving them to areas of concern at this point?
We, we're intending to work our way through the road classifications, sort of to justify the, the arterial roads, the collector roads before we want to present the streets. So we're looking at, you know, streets like Allen Avenue or.
Is, so tweets there? Is that? Okay.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, you mentioned, uh, when school goes in, school goes out. But another time where speeding is a major problem on Allen Avenue, and I know this because I live close to Allen Avenue, is when events at the complex end, the people race over there like crazy. And, uh, it's, I would really like to see a stop sign either at Third or Second Street myself. But for now, Allen Avenue is unscientifically a problem.
Go ahead and read the recommendation. Moved by Council Shaba, seconded by Council Eugene Ivanoff, being resolved that report number 2022, PWN 007 entitled Radar Speed Signs, be received for information and moved by Council White and seconded by Council Owen, defining that formal reports with the compiled data be ordered quarterly to the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board for further action.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carried? Jim? Uh, item 6.2 Traffic Options for Fos Lane. Jim?
Thank you, your worship. Through to council. The council had corrected that we, that the second inspection of Fos Lane has put back on options, uh, for dealing with the self-standard design of Fos Lane. It's, Fos Lane is significantly narrower than, than a typical roadway. Typical roadway is usually 20 meters or 66 feet. Now, I mean, Fos Lane, the, uh, the actual traveled, uh, surface of the roadway is the right way. So it's six meters wide with, uh, three meters per lane. Now, this does meet anyone, uh, standards for, or vehicle lanes, however, it takes up the entire road allowance and it doesn't have additional room for shoulders. Now, this can be, it is perceived to be concerned when, uh, traffic flowing in both directions. But considering the relatively isolated location of Fos Lane and the low traffic volumes there, we're recommending, um, the best option is to add additional road signage at this time. Type of signs we're open that would be watch, uh, watch pedestrians yield to oncoming traffic and keep right. So other options that council could consider, um, you could change Fos Lane to a, a one-way street. And this would certainly, uh, provide additional room for pedestrians. But I don't believe that it would be a popular decision with people that live in the area. This is part of their customary need for, for traveling back and forth from home. But it is an option. Uh, certainly widening the roadway is, is another option. But this, this would require securing additional land. That could easily involve removing some structures. In, in some senses, um, you don't even have common use between houses on opposite sides of the. And then the last alternative would be closing up, up the roadway. But, uh, this is not practical. Uh, there's a number of homes that front onto Fos Lane that we have sewer water. So access would still need. So at, at this point, we're recommending, um, installation of some additional signs and, uh, with, with consideration of the one-way street should, with the problem presence.
Councilor?
Okay, so that was first. Um, I'm not the favorite signs. Uh, we moved houses, uh, two years ago and I realized about a year and a half after moving into a house, there's a little button on there with a play ball in front of them and people don't notice the word as individuals were self-centered and the signs, you won't notice it. Um, I have references before, I think when Ashley was here, Sabreys using, I'm not sure if you can see it. Anyway, removable speed bumps, rubber that you can bolt down for the summer season. Getting a speed bump will slow you down. Whereas a sign won't slow you down. So I'm thinking that something like this would probably be more cost-effective. It's a small lane, right? You put it across one on each side of Fos Lane, slow down for the speed bump. I think we get more bang for buck off of this than the sign that people, like there's a yield sign when we come up off a federal and I've missed that one a few times as well. So that's my suggestion for this one. Speed bump would be, or speed hump, removable would be better.
Councilor Abbott?
Yeah, what about a reduction in the speed limit on that, on that lane from, uh, whatever it is, a 50 down to a 30 or a 25? Uh, which would, you know, I, I, at least you have something that's enforceable by the, uh, police if they have to. Uh, not saying they would go out there every day, but they could, you know, certainly try to control that and people on Fos Lane knew it was a 25 instead of a 50. It might make that street a lot safer.
Yeah, I'm sure.
As opposed to just a sign, a sign saying watch out for pedestrians is one thing, but a speed limit sign is something that, if it's passed by this council, that would make have, have an effect on that, on that roadway immediately and, uh, something that would be enforceable.
Yeah, it certainly would have an effect. Like the, the majority of, of traffic on Fos Lane is people that are very.
That live there.
Yeah. In a situation already. Um, we, we were thinking the, the signs would, would have an impact on, on someone who wasn't familiar with the area. Safer in town at this time. But yeah, certainly. Speed would work. Or we got.
Yeah, that, that is, uh, my option too. Maybe couple that with, uh, uh, road signs. Uh, see what works. And maybe in about, uh, nine months a year, it's time when we will discuss that again and see what has worked or hasn't. And we will complain, yes, have to be ended it. If there are no complaints, then yes, well, you have to go back to the drawing board. Uh, that's what it's speed bumps, right? Uh, the problem with that irrelevant material is that snow power. I don't know if that's a service that, and you tell me, I mean, so that we can take that off when you're applying that snow and it has some minor damage. You rip that up or you have to try to navigate through those, uh, intervals of this speed bump. I don't know, I mean, you're, you're, you ask for that, but I guess that that will be, that will, that will have serviceability, which means I give out and are replacing that with rain also because of potential damages that may occur to the road. But again, it is an idea, it's good, I just wonder if I think that's.
Councilor Adams?
Yeah, just reviewing the report and who was consulted in, uh, developing these recommendations. I think we actually missed the content experts on this, being the Temiscaming Health Unit and the Road Safety Coalition. Uh, as neither of us are all experts on road safety. I think we should probably, uh, reference them for some consultation on this before deciding on what to implement for road safety, uh, controls. As we have a whole department within our province that's happy to help with us and have experts on this.
Council White, or, uh, sorry, Owen?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Um, yeah, I was, we received one letter about this street and the OPP did their study and gave us an accurate accident frequency, uh, in that area. I didn't find the accidents, I didn't find the number of accidents that high. Um, higher there than it would be what I would expect on other streets in Kirkland Lake. Now, I'm the one that's always sitting there saying, we gotta make this a safer community. We gotta make this a safer community. But at the same time, I'm not sure that the stats that were provided to us justified a major change in, in, in that street. Yes, I see the potential for a lot more accidents on that street. But in the 40 years I've lived in Kirkland Lake, I don't ever remember that street coming to council, uh, as a concern. So, yeah, I have no problem with dropping the speed limit. I have no problem with what Council Adams suggested too, is let's talk to the experts. Because to me, the numbers don't seem significant, but maybe to the Road Safety Coalition, they are. Um, but I, I, I would definitely agree with Council Adams. We should maybe perhaps defer this until we consult the outside agency.
Council White?
Yeah, I definitely agree with members of council that I think that it should be deferred at this point. Um, I agree with Rick, uh, completely. The report that was given prior to this really didn't show to me a significant issue on that lane. Like I grew up there, I, I've been exposed to that for 40 years. Um, there wasn't a significant, in my opinion, uh, traffic accident in, in all those years. So there has been a lot of other issues brought up tonight and I'd be comfortable with having this deferred to a later date, um, pending investigation.
Oh, yeah, a couple of things. I, I really have to be very careful that we don't try to establish a threshold for action when it comes to complaints. So it doesn't matter to me if there was one resident complaining or 10,000. I think we should treat them and act upon them because we'll process it according to 10,000 complaints. So, uh, the other issue would be that, um, you know, I'm, I'm not going to have a second guess. You guys must have been doing this, maybe you've talked to the health community people, I'm not too sure of that. But if it comes back again, maybe I will, uh, ask you to please add, uh, under the consultation with people that, uh, maybe healthy and I don't agree that, that, uh, was something, I don't think that's put a lot of the time on there for some bringing information there, so I really don't want to be in the business of trying to, uh, second guess that. Thank you.
I think it'd be interesting, like, when, when I was down at the, uh, trip ropes conference this year, actually, I attended a session on designing safer, safer roads in, in, in a town and and it's, might be counterintuitive at, at, at first, but the trend is now to design narrower, more winding roads that, that with kind of realization that drivers will drive at the speed that they're comfortable with. And, um, and so they actually are, are recommending now that, that you introduce narrower, uh, lanes and obstacles as a traffic calming measure. So that, that, that's sort of why we went with the, with, with the recommendation for signs. It, it was more just to address the issue of drivers who aren't familiar with the area and what it would bring into their attention.
But you might have that news for you because we desire was based on the court, as you know, and that word is not going to change with what you just said, I heard it, I heard it, everybody should heard. Uh, uh, and that, and that word is not going to change. Some of us that are in the business of designing roads, they're going to be designing this on the grid as in front of us. Not what we wanted to be, but I don't, uh, this is, uh, this is long taken and they should be looking into that. They're looking at that in previous city too, to make that ride now comfortable for people. So they have to slow down.
Motion to be heard.
Okay, so, uh, I heard the following. I have a mover, Council Owen, seconded by Council Adams, that be resolved that report number 2022, Public Works 008, uh, entitled Traffic Options for Fos Lane be received. And the following, and finally, that the following replace the second paragraph of the proposed recommendation. And that the matter be deferred to a future meeting of council to allow for consultation with the Temiscaming Health Unit and the Road Safety Coalition.
We'll go with that and vote on it?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? On the post?
There's no.
I didn't raise my hand.
Is the vote carried, your worship? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, as amended.
Item 6.2, uh, traffic, oh, sorry, 6.3. Oh, 6.3. Item 6.3, uh, swastika forest main project update.
Thank you, your worship. Through to council. Public Works has asked to report a, a project. Public Works has asked to report a project update on Swastika Forest Main Project. Just as a bit of background, this project involves converting the current Swastika Water Commission Control Plant into a sewage pumping station and then constructing approximately five kilometers of forest main from Swastika to Kirkland Lake where we created our new wastewater treatment plant. Now, initially, the project called for complete decommissioning Swastika plant, but due to projected cost overruns, that part of the project was. So, this is just a bit of an reminder to council that in the future, we still would like to see the complete decommission of that plant and construction of the lift station at Old Department. Aqua Engineering was hired to oversee project management and Stan Tech was hired for project design. And contract for construction was awarded to Pedersen Construction. Now, the project is moving along quite well. As of today, all of the sanitary force means been installed and ground and successfully pressure tested. So, all that remains now is the work at the Swastika Sewerage Plant as well as at the two lift stations. Sort of at either end of the project, which need to be retrofitted to accommodate the change in direction of flow, in some instances, and the amount of flow. Now, this work in the stations has been delayed due to critical components, the mid Victor being like a delay in the contractor being able to acquire things like the control plant and some switches. So, the June completion date is being pushed forward to September, October timeframe, which will still be sufficient to meet our funding requirements. Now, in terms of the budget, originally, there was a $600,000 contingency amount in the contract and in order to make this project fly, we had reduced that contingency amount by a quarter of a million dollars to $350,000. To date, we're running approximately $290,000 in change orders, so we're approaching the limits of that contingency amount. However, since writing the report, we've kind of dived into the individual items in the contract and there's a number of cost savings that were realized through the changes and when you add them up, we're over the $200,000 mark. So, in the end, we're hoping, we're anticipating this project will come in under budget on schedule. So, if there's any questions.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I have a few questions, Jim. Aqua Engineering is separate, a separate division of Aqua that operates our sewage treatment and water facilities, right?
Yes, it's under the.
It's the same sort of corporation, but it's a separate entity, okay? How often are they on site to inspect what the contractor is doing?
They haven't been on site, that that's been subcontracted out to a project inspection.
And we approve that? Even though we hired Aqua Engineering to oversee project management? And then we approve them hiring another company?
Well, they're identified subcontractor actually of Stan Tech. The whole structure here is a little convoluted. We have, we actually have two consulting firms that are overseeing this project and going back to.
Okay, I have some concerns here. We hired Aqua Engineering to oversee.
The entire project.
The entire project.
Yes.
We hired Stan Tech to design the project.
And do contract management.
Well, then what's Aqua Engineering doing? It says there to oversee project management. What's the difference between that and what you just said? I don't know the construction business, I may be asking stupid questions, Jim, and I apologize, but I'm not, I don't know anybody in construction.
I have to agree with you that this is a little unusual. Aqua was hired originally to do the entire contract because of when the original design came in, it was too much money, tactical hack to redesign. That's when Stan Tech was started to brought on board to do the redesign. But turned out the contract that the town had signed with Aqua kept them in the, kept them in the, at some point, that provision ship typically would have been severed. We would have just dealt with Stan Tech.
Okay, and I think this may have happened before you were.
Yeah, this happened.
Yeah, so in all fairness to anybody that's listening, Jim was not part of the contract set, okay? And so I'm putting him on the spot for previous people. Now, okay, so this subcontractor, how often are they on site to inspect the?
Well, now, Stan Tech has subbed out the actual contract inspection work to them. Inspection. And they're on site all the time. They've got a representative here in town, rented an apartment, and he's on the job site.
Well, I'm glad to hear it, when the apartment is living in town, that's positive. Now, do you get regular reports on that project? Do they, does that inspector send you reports or does he just send them to Stan Tech?
Both.
Okay, good.
I make the point to stay on top of what's happening with that project.
Okay, good. That's because I've been asked many, many times by rate pitters. They don't see Kirkland Lake town employees on the job. And so they're assuming that we're just letting the contractor go ahead and do whatever he wants. And I just couldn't believe that was happening. I'm a little confused about all the contracts and subcontracts, but I am pleased that we do have a company there that's overseeing the project. I am pleased they are reporting to you on a regular basis. And I have full faith in you as an engineer to pick up on anything that's not done correctly. And I certainly do not want Pedersen to think that I'm questioning their credibility or their ability to do the job. We've used them on many, many projects and we've always had, we've always been satisfied, more than satisfied with the work they've done for us, but I needed to get answers because I keep getting asked, so thanks, Jim.
And that kind of goes back to when, we used to have an engineering department.
Yes.
And then, and so we would have our town inspectors on site at that. Now, without an engineering department, we.
We've contracted out, yeah.
But who's your project services there? They're working with us and they're looking out for the town's best interest.
Okay, and you just made it easy for me to explain people to people by saying, we no longer have an engineering department. Therefore, we've subcontracted it. So, that's the easy explanation, thank you.
I will add, we've had dealings with Stan Tech over the years and the reputation is well beyond good. Excellent.
No, we are quite fortunate to have the contractor, we can work on this project as well as the consultants. Everybody's working together to make sure this thing is being installed properly and costs are being closely watched. And a number of these savings can actually contribute correctly to contractor suggestions and suggestions from consultants, so in the end, it's going well.
Any further call?
What happens, Jim, if we are not finished on time?
We can ask the funding agency for an extension.
And I trust that they, if it's a procurement issue, I'm sure that they have to be reasonable about that, because these are not normal times.
We've gotten extensions already, they've already been acquiring.
Two extensions already, I believe, yeah.
And they've actually been asking us if we are going to be completely on time. And again, that October 31st funding deadline right now, that's not their calendar year, so I can't see if we can get that from.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Jim.
Any further questions? Motion?
Yes, it is. Moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, be resolved that report number 2022 PW10, entitled Swastika Forest Main Project Update be received for information.
All in favor? Motion, Carrie?
I just want to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Item 6.4, can we standard bylaw update? Williams, or bylaw update?
I'm Peter Worship. Through you to council, I would like to present the report for an amendment to the community standards bylaw. The community standards bylaw sets standards for properties in town with respect to the conditions of yards and land. The regulations contained in the existing bylaw have been deemed by staff to be sufficient. This amendment is only to update the administration enforcement section. The proposed administration enforcement section lays out a prescribed set of steps that mirror what was included in the property standards bylaw update presented at the June 7th regular meeting of council. The goal of this amendment is to improve clarity in the enforcement procedure so that town staff and members of the community can have a consistent and predictable path to follow on route to achieving compliance with the standards set out in the community standards bylaw.
Certainly, we do, we did need some changes to update us to today's standards. It's a very detailed report, well done. Any further comments?
Moved by Counselor Lad Chava, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be resolved that report number 2022 DEV021, entitled Community Standards Bylaw Amendment be received. And by the council hereby approve the amendments to the community standards bylaw and direct to the proposed amendment, the proposed amendments as presented be brought forward for three readings at the July 12, 2022 meeting.
All in favor? Motion, Carrie? Item 6.5, Agnagle Eagle, request to purchase Archer Drive industrial park.
Thank you, through you, Worship. The report is for information purposes. It identifies that there are 277 acres that Agnagle Eagle slash Kirkland Lake Gold have offered to purchase. The value will be $818,913,000. The purpose will be to support current and future mining operations in that area that would contribute to the long-term viability of the Casamote.
Good. How many acres?
207, 277.
277. Any concern, any comments? Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm very pleased that Agnagle Eagle is putting such a strong vote of confidence in Kirkland Lake. They are a company that has a very good reputation for dealing with communities and being very community oriented. They also have a good reputation for being a good place to work. So, basically, right now, we have a bunch of land with high mineral potential that we will probably never develop in the next 40 years. I mean, I'd love it if somebody could prove me wrong on that, but and Agnagle Eagle has a history of dealing with communities where they have to deal with surface rates owners. So, I think it's very progressive on Agnagle Eagle's position to come out, approach us, make us a fair, I think, a very fair offer when you consider the price of land. And I think that, you know, we will be looking for new industrial land, so we can welcome other industries, but I think this is a win-win for everyone concerned, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any more motion?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be resolved that report number 2022 DEV023, entitled Agnagle Eagle Kirkland Lake Gold Limited, request to purchase Archer Drive industrial park be received for information.
All in favor? Motion, Carrie? 6.6, request to purchase surplus land at 776 Government Road West, General and Democratic Administration.
Thank you, Worship. Through you to council, we did receive a request to purchase a piece of surplus land at 776 Government Road West. The proposed purchase price is at the $2 per square foot that we've been looking to get for our land more recently. There has been very little interest in this property, so if you need to proceed with us.
Was that the original bid?
This is the offer that was, that's accepted at the $8,000.
Any comments, concerns?
Moved by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Lad Chava, be resolved that report number 2022 DEV24, entitled Request to Purchase Surplus Land at 776 Government Road West be received for information.
All in favor? Motion, Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.7, pool bylaw update, you're back on.
Thank you, Worship. Through you to council, I'd like to present the report for an update to the pool bylaw. The pool bylaw was last updated in 2007 and requires updating to address the modernization of privately owned swimming pools, like the growing popularity of seasonally installed above ground pools. This update includes a more detailed regulation section as well as a prescribed enforcement section. It should be noted that the goal of this update is not to penalize residents with existing pools on their property. The regulations contained in the bylaw update would only apply to new pools installations. Permit approval will be required for the installation of new swimming pools capable of containing more than 30 inches of water. The permit approval process would mirror the system already in place for permitting the installation of fences and carry a flat fee to be introduced in the next user fee by law update. To ensure that no existing pools are mistaken for new installations by staff, a declaration form is proposed to be circulated to exist. To ensure that no existing pools are mistaken for new installations by staff, a declaration form is proposed to be circulated to existing pool owners through mail, email, and other means so that residents in possession of swimming pools may declare their pool existing in writing so the town can accurately maintain how many existing pools are in the town. The permitting of new pool installation is proposed to begin upon the passing of the bylaw update while the enforcement procedures are proposed to be pushed until twenty twenty three to provide ample time to differentiate existing pools from new installations. The goal of this update is to provide and make enforceable a safe standard of swimming pool installations so that staff and members of the public have a clear and consistent expectation for the process of installing a swimming pool.
Any comments or concerns?
Just a small comment, just to ensure that pool owners that are already up there did not contribute any bylaws intentionally. This is something on staff, on, this is on the town.
For you to counsel, the language in the two thousand and seven bylaw does require permits, but that was put lightly and consistently enforced.
It was never, like, not from lack of trying, was never enforced.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I I just wanted to put that out there that pool owners are not obviously those trying to circumvent the rules. Some of us reached out, just did not. We played by rules.
Councilor White?
Yeah, I just want to um clarify for current existing pool owners, there will be no pushback. They fill out that form. It's declared as like legal nonconforming.
Correct.
And there's no fees, there's, there's nothing that they need to worry about on their behalf other than just to declare that they've already had this pool.
Correct, and if someone were not to fill out that form and an issue were to arise in the future, if they had evidence that the pool was installed prior to passing the bylaw, they would be exempt.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Owen?
Yes, I'd just like to thank our chief billing official for really getting into the job and and making changes to things that have been overlooked in the past. And I only hope that you and your staff will not be given a hard time over this. Um, council knows full well about all the handshake deals that went on, not just concerning, say, swimming pools, but concerning other matters. And it's often left council in a very difficult position because it's a he said, she said, and we weren't there. So I just want to thank you for this type of work and uh hopefully you won't, it won't come back on you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Not noted?
Moved by Council Stacy White, seconded by Council Rick Owen, be resolved that report number twenty twenty two D E V thirty entitled Pool Bylaw Update be received. And finally, the council hereby approve the proposed amendments to the pool bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings at the July twelfth, twenty twenty two meeting.
All in favor? Motion, carry. Item six point eight. March sixteen, two thousand and twenty tax sale and collection update. Mike Parker, treasurer.
Welcome, Mike. Through your worship and through council. You have before you a report which is a short summary of the results of the tax sale that we finalized in March. There's also some discussion there about the efforts we're making right now and our plans for collection of overdue accounts. In in summary, we received just over two hundred and nine thousand dollars from the tax sale, of which we were able to keep sent one hundred and seventy three thousand, and that's really a reflection of the fact that if the property sells for more than what we have on our tax roll at the time, the balance goes to the province that sits in a pool there where other creditors can take a run at it. Used to be able to take a run at it ourselves, but that's no longer available to us. The schedule that's on the, on the website gives details about how you get two hundred and nine and the one seventy three, which properties were actually sold and which, and the two properties that you've already approved for, for vesting. Uh, with regards to the rest of the, of the report, you can see there's two point four million currently outstanding in taxes. Uh, this is actually down seven hundred and fifty thousand from roughly the same time last year. Um, of course, you can imagine it goes up and down depending on the tax cycle. We have one coming up in in a few weeks here for the July billing, so go up quite a bit for a short period of time. Our goal, after we get through that tax billing cycle, uh, the thing to keep in mind here, I think, overall is that we have one dedicated staff to tax collection and, and the tax revenue side as well. Their responsibility is to, you know, make this all kind of happen, decisions of council and stuff like that. Um, so we kind of work in those cycles around the tax billing times. Uh, so our goal is to, we're going to take essentially close to a little bit more, more than half of those outstanding balances, one point four. And that, we identified that relatively easily by saying, who hasn't paid in two years? Um, beyond two years, let me be clear. So that's twenty twenty, that's anybody who hasn't paid since twenty twenty plus a couple of accounts that had kind of unique circumstances that we added to the list. So they'll be receiving a letter as soon as they're finished with the tax revenue cycle. Uh, the letter is essentially going to have three dates on it, thirty, sixty, and ninety days. Um, they have to get a hold of us, they have to make a plan or pay the balance. At the ninety days, if we've heard nothing or, or not, we haven't come to a, a reasonable solution, then we're going to identify those properties for tax sale. Of course, you, I mean, you've been through the tax sale process now, so it takes a year from that point before we actually do the tax sale. So, you know, typically what happens is within that, we'll say sixty days in this example, we'll get quite a few phone calls, there'll be a lot of activity. You know, some of it'll, they'll come through with full amounts, some of it'll be partial or plans. Um, so, you know, we, we don't expect there to be near sixty properties up for tax sale next year. Keeping that in mind, the other portion of the outstanding taxes is a little bit more current, some of them go back to twenty twenty. Um, we plan in the fall to kind of go through the same process, send out a group of letters with the same kind of timelines, with the same kind of wording indicating what our, what our, you know, plans are with regards to their accounts. And we'll see how that plays into as well, so you could again, you know, closer to if the October will send, I hope, but it'll probably, you know, early next year, the council will be making decisions on both particular accounts. There is, there's a couple of, I guess, um, judging by the question I got last time, I just want to kind of put out a very short summary of what's moving on, you know, from a, from a budget point of view and a cash flow point of view. So the whole point of this process, obviously, is to collect the taxes that we've, we've built over the years. And at this point in time, when you're talking about delinquent accounts, it doesn't typically change the budget. What happens is you get that cash flow in, which is now then available to the, for the projects and for the, for the decisions of council. You know, so we have lots of capital requirements going forward, there'll, you know, be less use of debt, there'll be less use of other resources to try and, if we can bring these, these monies in. Uh, there is potentially, you know, two ways that it can affect the budget. One is obviously, you know, if, if we put this, start this process, um, we're hoping that other people who are, you know, on the borderline kind of lag in their, their payments, but don't necessarily wait two years to, to do something about it, will be a little bit more current, which again, uh, will improve our, our, our bottom line in the sense that those revenues aren't lost to us in a current year. It also improves, we have a process that we walk through several times a year, but during the audit processes, when the change actually happens, we have bad debt or bad collections type of adjustment every year. If we're doing a better job, if we're having more success with the collections, we reduce that expense and that goes directly to our bottom line, which improves surplus in any particular year. But that's the easiest, I'm sorry, that's the most obvious effect on the budget. Um, there is a, a potential negative effect and and you just saw it. If these property, properties aren't bid on, you could end up in a position where you could, you could register them. And and then you have to write off the taxes, if you want to keep the lands for, for our purposes or for future sale. So then you have that direct hit again, the reduction in your surplus when you make that decision. Um, that's essentially what this report says. Be very happy to answer any questions.
Councilor White?
Um, not so much a question, it's just kudos to you and your staff. This council has been on this since twenty nineteen. And so the, the action that's been taken in such a short period of time by your staff is just absolutely phenomenal to get these delinquents accounts that sometimes are more than two years, some of them. It's just phenomenal work by your team and and kudos to all of you, and we look forward to the next report. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd like to make it very clear, this is, this is a, we're well experienced and, and say aggressive, but a person, a person who enjoys their job and that they understand why we do it and why it's important, and and they've been applying themselves, you know, quite diligently to this.
It shows amazing work.
Yeah, it was nice to see, uh, we have a plan in place that we actually follow uh, in the past. It's like paying your fifty dollars a month and it just got worse and worse and built up to what it was uh, in the past year. So, uh, again, congratulations on the job well done.
Yeah, we're trying to meet the, uh, the goals of your collection policy that you, you passed. We're not going to probably meet it for another year or two, but that's the staffing, that's just a volume issue. We have this many properties.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that we do have a very experienced tax collector. My concern is, um, burn it. Okay, we have done, she has done excellent work so far. But we still have two point four million whereas the tax is sitting out there. Her job is much more than just tax collector, okay? And that, and then, in a way, she shouldn't be called the tax collector because it, in case she only does one thing. I, I think I read in the report about, uh, contracting some, some out possibility. I'm wondering, um, and and I don't know, because I know nothing about operations. Would it be better to hire somebody, say, for a year? Or is it better to contract out? And I think when you contract out, you pay a fee plus to keep the percentage. I I'm not like, I'm just throwing that out there because I am concerned about our tax collector, just like any other staff member. And that's an awful lot of weight on her shoulders. Especially when, well, you mentioned it, the tax cycles and stuff. You know what's involved, but the, the public doesn't. And 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 I'm afraid if we don't get some relief in there at some point that we may lose a very valuable employee. Um, and and I don't want to see that happen. So I'm just throwing that out for a suggestion.
I certainly agree with Council Owen on that one, uh, having worked collections in the bank finance field and you can get burnt out. That is a lot of money to collect. I hope she can keep up the same strength, because it's not an easy job.
So I haven't, um, I don't have concrete plan to address that, but it is, it is on my radar. And we do, we, we will almost guarantee be using that, that particular contractor to help us with the collection with the tax sale process. Uh, we already anticipate that. Uh, we also have another person who's starting the process of learning some of the tax collection and tax revenue style. So you're, you're right, the workload is pretty heavy. We're, we're kind of hoping that those two things will give us some temporary relief till we kind of address the, how much of a long-term issue we have.
Thanks.
Good. Now, Councilor Chava?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't know why, uh, you guys, uh, haven't done that, but a lot of, uh, small firms right now, they are going into, uh, third party debt collector agencies because, I mean, with it aid time consuming and and you're not getting anywhere, and all this third party, which is just pretty good at handling people to death, you know? You know, and they don't live in the community either, so you're totally, you're totally oblivious and they, they're there, so they're the services that, uh, I do look at if it's allowed to do that in Musco level, uh, to, to avoid my type of, what you have in the house. That will bring in some, I do know, I did charge a small amount of fees to, uh, for their services, but, uh, we went, we went to them in my part and, uh, if they would, they feel a, free that individual to do other things uh, other than trying to call people ten thousand times with their response or email or whatever it's like, so. I think, uh, you know, consider it a third party possession, because if it's, if it's allowed from the support of the Musco level, then it's, it's the outcome, all the cover of that.
Yeah, good worship to council. I'm not sure myself whether or not you're actually allowed to use a collection, you can seek for taxes. Um, what we were talking about here is a slightly different beast in the sense that once we, once we've decided that something's going to tax sale, then we use a contractor to walk, to go through the process. There's still some front end work required by our staff because they need a bunch of information. It's not, i- it's just a very time-consuming process, both the, the preparation of the taxes, the efforts to collect it, and then this backend part right now that we're, uh, that we're going through. I'm, I'm going to take that back and take a look and see if maybe we could get some kind of temporary help that way. The, the other part of this is, is, um, I suppose, I suppose that's essentially it, yeah.
Go ahead. Just to say that, uh, we do recognize the tremendous pressure and workload that individual has and we are looking at the variety of alternatives and options that we can alleviate some of that pressure and we can continue the great work that Lloyd's team is doing right now. So that is on our radar.
Any other comments or concerns?
Yeah. I, I would think about the, this is sixty days that people are given to come up with a payment. I guess they could essentially contact you and come up with as minimum as possible a payment and then the clock start ticking again with that sixty days or how do that work? I mean, if, if you, uh, have two days to go before the expiration of that sixty day pool, then a five dollar payment. So I just want to know, start the clock again or it doesn't matter, just keep, you know, the time is up, your time is up, so that does not play out.
Through your worship to council, um, we have people using that tactic right now who think that, you know, by paying very small amounts, it, it doesn't trigger our review or analytical process and everything else. We understand that that's a common tactic. Uh, the sixty days, to, to give you an idea of what we've been discussing, you know, you know, what, what is an acceptable plan? Well, an acceptable plan is some very short-term plan to deal with what you owe. That's the, the delinquent stuff. And also to find some way that you're going to stay current on what's coming out this year and next year and stuff like that. You know, the, the comment of fifty dollars a month was, was well taken because there has been scenarios where that was the case. Um, that's not our goal here. Uh, you know, the, the community is very healthy and, and, you know, of course, by individuals, you might see some scenarios where that's not true. Um, but, you know, we, we want people to get as current and as fast as they can. And and we're not stopping the clock if, you know, it, it doesn't stop the clock just by giving us fifty bucks and say, go away.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, one quick thing. So, the, the person that's in arrears offers you a plan and you don't like the plan, like it's fifty dollars a year. Okay, you can reject that plan. Is, is that what I'm hearing or?
Yeah, the, the plan is, is just our attempt to avoid the tax sale process. It is not, it's not somehow, it's not really binding on us. We don't, we don't have legal agreements drawn up every time somebody comes with a plan or something like that. If they're not addressing the, the, uh, delinquent taxes and the current portion, then we'll just let it ride out for the rest of the year until. then we'll just let it ride out for the rest of the year until until we hit the end and see if they make a an effort or something different happens in that account in particular.
Okay, I think the important thing is, and Lev was asking too, is the clock isn't reset over a fifty dollars a year plan.
The clock is legally reset if we made.
Yeah.
Right? And 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 it won't be reset until we hit that one-year process from our point of view, at which point I guess we will assess whether or not, you know, sufficient headways been made or whether they they complete the tax sale process.
Thank you.
Fair motion.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Lad Chaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved that report number 2022 pin zero zero nine entitled March 16, 2022 Tax Sales and Collection Update be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number seven, consideration of motions, nor your notices of motions, um. Yeah, seven point one. Uh, councillor Adams, uh reconsideration flagpole uh banner and announcement protocols policy.
Uh, yeah, I don't have uh much too much to say on this besides, uh, thank you to staff for writing up this policy and making me look good with this whole report. Thank you very much. Uh, pretty self-explanatory in itself. Uh, we couldn't fly the uh pride flag for the month of June for in 2021 and 2022 because we didn't have a flag policy. Uh, we flew the flags at town hall at the start of June before this policy. Thank you. And uh, yeah, that's all I got to say uh on that one. And uh, yeah, let's uh recognize pride and put this all in place.
We certainly had this corrected in a quick turnaround time, so much appreciated by the Whiston Ball. Yeah, councillor Owen.
Yeah, just a minor point here. Um, says flagpole locations, and these are the three that I was aware of. But in driving by the cemetery, I see that we have two flagpoles there as well. Um, I don't know who owns them, like, but there are two flagpoles. Um, where the half-circle driveway is, there's the um shed or whatever. And then if you're looking at it to the right, there's some other sort of building or or structure, and there's a flagpole, two flagpoles there. Um, so I know the Legion did work around, like at the cemetery, so I don't know if those are considered Legion flagpoles or town flagpoles or but they are on town property. Um, the first time I went by, there was no flags on them and I thought, hmm, if they're not being used, you know, we could possibly move them. Um, but uh, the next time I went by, there was Canadian flag and an Ontario flag uh flying in front of us, so.
Councillor.
So there is another location.
Casey. So I'd like to thank staff for putting turn on this, for doing the right thing and to have the poles put up quickly and the flags put up quickly. And not just for pride, for any group that within our community that wants to be recognized by the Town of Kirkland Lake. Now, with this motion, would this be the time to add something where we investigate purchasing proper flagpoles for town hall, or do we stay with the system we have? Is that for this discussion or something that has to come back?
I think we just have to come back.
If I may, to you, to all of council. So it's a notice of motion from councillor. So, um, the recommend, the proposed motion identifies that staff will bring back a report with auctions, which staff had already identified that would include, uh, as a in the discussion with council, had already identified that we would include the uh information surrounding additional flagpoles. So in in that circumstance, staff is actually uh reporting back to you on those options. So I I think it would be uh, it would be a moot point to have it added to the motion because it's going to be a part of the report.
There are no other comments.
Okay. Perfect. So I'll read the motion. Moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be resolved with council request that policy for 2020, 26, flagpole banner and announcement protocols be amended to allow for flag raisings and announcement proclamations at the Town of Kirkland Lake Municipal Office. And then a flag raising and proclamation request program be established by the Town of Kirkland Lake. And then a guiding document be established for the raising and half-masting of flags at the municipal office in keeping with the protocols as set out by the Department of Canadian Heritage. And finally, that a report be presented before the end of this term of council for approval.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration files.
Uh, moved by councillor Lad Chaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owen, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbers pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two forty-seven being a bylaw to establish a new policy.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Uh, this next bylaw is actually a housekeeping bylaw. It was, uh, the execution bylaws, uh, the report might be counsel in January of 2022. Um, and I caught that the execution bylaw had not been uh passed, so this is why it's on tonight's agenda. As the races are happening, I think the preparations are starting to be ready. So, uh, moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two forty-eight being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between Team London Throttle TNT and the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake for the use of the municipal airport for annual drive racing events.
All in favor? Motion carried.
The next bylaw is also a general housekeeping amendment. It's just to identify that um language in terms of contracted services and um and and such and typographical errors. Uh, so it's, it's nothing that's coming, that hasn't been previously approved by council. It's simply a general housekeeping amendment. Moved by councillor Lad Chaba, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two forty-seven being a bylaw to appoint a municipal law enforcement officer for the purposes of enforcing bylaws in the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time number pass signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two fifty, being allowed to prescribe standards for maintenance and occupancy of properties within the Town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Lad Chaba, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time number pass signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two fifty-one being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of seven seventy-six government road west two to reserve.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Seems like such a technicality, doesn't it? Moved by councillor Lad Chaba, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time number pass signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two fifty being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of land in the Archer Drive Industrial Park to Kirkland Lake Road Limited.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. Not noted. Item ten, notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion? Not noted. Councillors' reports.
I attended the Canadian Mining Expo in uh Timmins on uh invitation from the Mayor of Timmins. Uh, was an excellent uh presentation of the exhibitors, uh. Like April, it was there almost, uh. It was eight thousand people there in over two days. So it was a good network, an opportunity, an opportunity to see what different products and services are are available in the mining industry. So it was quite enjoyable. And I competed in the drilling contest, but I didn't do too well. But was also attending.
It's a motion, it's a motion, yeah. Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Stacey White, be resolved that verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion for session, not noted. Confirmation by law.
Moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time number pass signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two fifty-three being allowed to confirm proceedings of council at its meeting of June 21, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White, be resolved that this regular meeting of council will now return at 6:02 PM.
All in favor?